I'd like to call this meeting in order. This is the City Council Regular Meeting. We're at City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Screw Street, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505. Today's Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, and it's 7:04. First matter of business is a nomination for mayor. So I'd like to open, uh, open the floor for nominations for mayor. Are there any nominations for mayor?
I'd like to nominate Danielle Trumbull.
And I'd like to nominate Joe Abu-Ganam.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I will start from the first ward. And when I call your name, then you can voice your vote on who you would like to vote for for mayor. And that will be either Counselor Danielle Trumbull or Deputy Mayor Joe Abu-Ganam. Okay. So, Joe Abu-Ganam?
Joe Abu-Ganam.
Bill Kueke?
Joe Abu-Ganam.
Wheezy Michael?
Danielle Trumbull.
Jenny Saline?
Joe Abu-Ganam.
Danielle Trumbull?
Trumbull.
Dave Harshberger?
Joe Abu-Ganam.
Ryan Butcher?
Not that it matters. Can I vote for both?
Probably not.
Probably not. Uh, maybe I'll just abstain. Since it doesn't matter.
That's, that's fine. As long as we have four votes, then we do have a mayor. So we have four votes for Joe Abu-Ganam and two votes for Danielle Trumbull. So our new mayor will be Joe Abu-Ganam. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, stand by. We're gonna switch seats and then we'll do the deputy mayor nominations.
How? Probably should just stay with us.
Joe, once you're done, can I have a G-Pak? Thank you.
Sorry for just being up.
We should make note that Dave Harshberger is participating and we can see him online and in the future we'll be able to see him up here.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I now open the floor for nominations for the office of deputy mayor. Are there any nominations for deputy mayor?
Joe, I'd like to nominate Jenny Saline, please.
Thank you. Dave Harshberger nominates Jenny Saline. Do I have any other nominations? All right. Then I'll take the vote. Second ward, Counselor Bill Kueke?
Yes, Jenny Saline.
Wheezy Michael? Counselor Wheezy. Counselor Saline?
Jenny Saline. That's strange. Yes.
Counselor Trumbull?
No.
Counselor Harshberger?
Yes, Deputy Saline.
Counselor Butcher?
Jenny Saline.
And then, there, we're done. Jenny Saline. All right. Your new deputy mayor, Jenny Saline. Okay.
Congratulations, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. You're getting, you logging off? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I close? Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we need to do that. Video.
There's your right hand. I state your name.
I, Joe Abu-Ganam.
Having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of Morgantown and the county of Montangalia, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of mayor according to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Thank you. I state your name.
Jenny Saline.
Having been elected to the office of deputy mayor in the city of Morgantown and the county of Montangalia, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of deputy mayor according to the best of my abilities.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please take a roll?
Yes. Bill Kueke?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshberger? Brian Butcher?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saline?
Here.
Mayor Abu-Ganam?
Present. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
All right. First we have, on our docket is the approval of minutes. We have the June 18th, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes, June 18th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes, June 25th, 2024 Special Meeting, and the June 25th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Back to the mission, Will.
Back to the mission. Next we have correspondence. First up, we have The Great Race and our own Nikki LaFleur is here along with Ms. Shannon Davis to tell us about the event that took place this past week in downtown Morgantown.
We had a PowerPoint, but we have technology issues, so everybody has handouts back here. Uh, so The Great Race took place on Monday, June 24th. Uh, some of our highlights, we had 75 cars participate, uh, classic cars from our local Dream Machines Car Club, 120 cars from The Great Race itself. Uh, the Hemmings Motor News Great Race is a nine-day, 2,300-mile classic car rally with 120 cars with pairs of drivers and navigators. And it's not a typical, uh, speed race course. It's actually, uh, based on precision and strategy for teams, uh, awarded points based on the driver navigator hitting a number of challenges and the accuracy of matching a certain time and speed through the predetermined course. Morgantown bid to become one of the, the stop cities along the way, and with that came certain responsibilities. Uh, we were to obviously promote the event, provide space for that, typically downtown is what they require, uh, provide a sponsored catered lunch for the great racers, um, a goody bag or swag bag that just promotes our area. And, um, you know, obviously that necessitated a lot of planning and a lot of promotion as well. So if you go to the second slide, um, some of our event debrief notes are positives. We had a well-balanced planning team. We had, uh, around 20 participants from various stakeholders within the city and without. Uh, this effort was actually a joint planning effort between the city, the Greater Morgantown Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, through Joe Vacecia, he's here tonight, and, uh, Morgantown Area Partnerships, Main Street Morgantown through Amy Loomis. So, um, we feel like that actually was a positive of the disexperience, both building relationships and being able to include all those stakeholders. Our partner indicated that they were pleased with our communication the day of the event. The Great Race themselves were actually very organized and very responsive to any questions or needs that we had. Paid advertisements obviously played a big role in marketing this. We couldn't just take the, the typical approach for smaller events of, of localized flyers and social media, though those were big parts of that. We'll get into a little more of what we did for that in a bit. We always feel like this, um, has a good impact on the public's participation in enjoyment of downtown and the perception of downtown. The more things we offer, obviously, uh, the more people can learn about what, what we have for them to do. Uh, and we actually appealed to a wider audience than we had originally thought. Because this was mostly a classic car event, it could have very well been a narrow event, but we tried to make a huge effort to have things for younger families and kids to be involved, for car enthusiasts, for people who just wanted something to do for the day. We feel like that went well. Uh, room for improvement, uh, better communication as an event to downtown businesses beforehand. We've kind of informally touched base and a few missed, uh, the opportunity to do business on Monday, but we'll, we'll work on some communication channels for that. Uh, we brought the fire department into planning for safety. Uh, the fire marshals joined us about halfway through the planning process. Uh, we'd love to get into future events, maybe a post-event merchant survey to measure the business impact. And we just, just some lessons learned for, uh, staff allocation for track, traffic management, maybe some additional traffic signage, uh, maybe more formal, uh, comfort items like water, first aid supplies for volunteers and, and attendees. Uh, and our marketing coordinator is gonna talk about, uh, some of the feedback we've gotten from the different groups that we're just with.
Yeah, um, so we talked to a lot of the Great Race personnel themselves, and they were very highly impressed with our downtown area, really highly impressed with our team that did the planning of it. We even had them tell us that this was one of their favorite lunch spots to date. Um, they loved everything down here. It was all really, really positive, specifically from Great Race personnel. Um, we also stopped and talked with a lot of our downtown merchants. Um, a lot of them said that they had definitely more foot traffic. Some of them said they had really high increase in sales too. Um, specifically one of them, Tanner's Alley, he said they had a 50% increase in sales that day compared to a normal Monday, which is a pretty big deal. Um, a lot of them said they definitely had a lot of foot traffic and having something offered on a Monday definitely brought a lot of people downtown. Community members as well were saying really positive, positive things. We talked to different people day of event who were really excited that we were offering something like this. Um, a lot of people were saying that they've been kind of waiting and hoping for more things downtown. So we got really, really, really positive reviews through and through from the community and from all of the events and people who participated. So I feel like that was a really strong impact, especially for our downtown. Um, it's something different that we haven't seen in a while, especially for a Monday day event, so.
Uh, so speaking back to building a strong stakeholder base for planning and participation, uh, the city departments involved were obviously Office of City Manager, Communications, Engineering, Public Works, uh, Finance helped a lot with our sponsorship, uh, work. The Police and Fire Department were involved from the beginning with the planning. Uh, the Parking Authority graciously waived, you know, parking fees for us to use, uh, one of the parking lots on, on Chestnut and the, the spaces on High Street. And obviously the Great Race personnel. We had, uh, merchant representation from Charlie McEwen at Tanner's Alley. Uh, we had some local participants and event planners, Kevin Swisher, who's involved, who actually brought this idea to our, our deputy mayor, now mayor, Joe Abu-Ganam, and that's why we went after this. Uh, the Dream Machines Car Club, which is a local car, car newsies, classic cars group, was actually instrumental in helping us do this as well. Um, additional involvement, we had United States Army recruiters come. The Boy Scouts of America did a pine box derby, which actually gave us a big participation component for, for younger kids and families, and we feel like that was successful. Uh, Main Street Morgantown did a wonderful job of reaching out to, uh, some local food trucks just to supplement since it was a hot day and a lot of people there. Uh, we had a rough estimate of 1,200 people, uh, using just informal counting methods with a clicker, but a better estimate would be 2,500 to 3,000 participants, which is, is pretty good for a, a Sunday weekday in the summer. We had, um, yeah, some, some support services provided by Morgantown Septic Tank for, for porta-potties, so, so we got a pretty good formula down if we do something similar. Uh, financial data, so cost outlays, in-kind city divestments, uh, so in-kind man-hours from the Police Department and Public Works, uh, $576.32 from police, Public Works, $669.18. Most folk staff were pulled from their typical duties to help with setup and, uh, crowd management. We had a bit of overtime, uh, within the police department, so it was a, a huge effort. Um, catering costs of $5,400, printing of, um, materials, sanitation needs, these were paid for through the Morgantown Event Advancements Fund, which is funded by the city, awarded through the Conventions and Visitors Bureau, and was managed by Main Street Morgantown in this case. So, uh, local investment that gave us local results. Uh, the Visit Mountain Year Country CVB paid for the city's initial bid for $2,500 and outlaid advertising costs of over $3,000 for billboards, sponsored and boosted social media posts and, um, some advertisements and that was actually instrumental. Uh, and we did get some local community sponsored donations from Glock Felty Tires and Hilton Garden Inn, so our total estimated cost outlays for this were about $12,790, which, you know, for an event of that size is, is a good budget. Um, and there's some possibilities for what's next?
Yes, so it, overall, we felt like it was a really positive event. The community really loved it. People wanted to see more. So I know from our perspectives, we are anticipating hopefully being able to offer this event again in the future. We do know that the race routes are already set for the 2025-2026 year, but we are anticipating applying for the 2027 Great Race, and there is a potential for us to be a kickoff stop location, which would include a five-day stay in Morgantown, which could be huge for generating business for many local businesses in that area, because they would stay in our community and our local hotels and things of that caliber for five days before kicking off the actual Great Race travel. So we just kind of wanted to fill you guys in on how positive it seemed for the community and how everything went down for it, so thank you, Beth.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I would, I would also, I'd just like to express how much I appreciate all the hard work that you all did.
Well, thanks.
A lot of people don't see that behind you since, and Joe and Amy who are sitting back there, since Joe, not I saw Amy earlier, doing such a great job, just appreciate everything you all did.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Next we have the Don Knotts Month Proclamation. Vince, you'll be in. I will come up there first. The proclamation, whereas the native son and entertainment icon Jesse Donald Knotts was born in Morgantown on July 21st, 1924, the youngest of four sons, of farmer William Jesse Knotts and his wife, Elsie Luzette Knotts, and whereas Don Knotts grew up in Morgantown, graduated from Morgantown High School and earned a bachelor's degree in education with a minor in speech from West Virginia University, and whereas Don began performing as a ventriloquist and comedian even before high school and served his country during World War II, entertaining troops in a GI variety show called Stars and Grips, and whereas Don served the United States Army from June 21st, 1943, to January 6th, 1946, in the Army's 600, 6,817th Special Services Battalion, and he was awarded the World War II Victory Medal with the Philippine Liberation Medal, the Asian Pacific Campaign Medal, the American Campaign Medal, the Army Good Conduct Medal, the Army Marksman Badge, and the Honorable Service Lapel Pin, and whereas Don got his big break on television and in film and notable shows such as Search for Tomorrow and the Steve Allen Variety Show and the movie No Time for Sergeants. And whereas Don went on to great fame co-starring in The Andy Griffith Show as Barney Fife from 1960 to 1968, earning five Emmy Awards for Best Supporting Actor in a Television Comedy, and whereas Don continued to be a star in his own right, appearing in countless television shows, movies, and voice artist roles in the career that continued up until his death in 2006, and whereas Don Knotts provides entertainment and laughter to millions of people throughout his life and his celebrated career, never forgetting his roots and returning to Morgantown to visit classmates and friends. Now therefore I, Joe Abu-Ganam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, and on behalf of City Council, want to honor and celebrate the life and career of one of Morgantown's famous sons on the occasion of the 100th anniversary of his birth and proclamation the month of July 2024 to be Don Knotts Month. Is that from you?
This is a pretty working.
You got another one? Oh, man.
Then while you're getting hungry, let me just share when you're coming.
Please do that, because I need to.
We have received proclamations, a special certificate of recognition from the governor on both Don Knotts and the Met 100 for this occasion, which I think is really great. We also recently received a special recognition from Joe Manchin's office about the Metropolitan Theater and the 100 years of its music community. I see Tom's here, and then maybe we can kind of commission the third one, so that by the time we get to July 19th of this month, everything is about the Metropolitan Theater and Don Knotts. So, there's a new exhibit at the museum, there's going to be a Don Knotts Film Festival for several days, and then on the 24th, we'll have the Metropolitan Theater's 100th Celebration. So, thank you all, you all being there, I'm sure, but we really appreciate this to make sure everyone sees all of these hefty government proclamations supporting what is an important milestone.
And a friendly reminder to visit the Don Knotts Museum in our basement, or our main entrance.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have this place about the Metropolitan Theater and Don Knotts Metropolitan Theater.
Speaking of the Metropolitan Theater, whereas the new Metropolitan Theater opened July 24th, 1924, by the Communists Brothers as a smaller version of the Metropolitan Opera in New York City. And whereas Metropolitan Theater has served as the cultural anchor of historic downtown Morgantown, providing residents and visitors alike with entertainment, news, education, and performance opportunities. And whereas the Met was recognized and listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1983. And whereas caring citizens from Metropolitan Theater Preservation Foundation, the Metropolitan Theater Foundation, and the numerous local business and individuals collectively worked to save and restore the Met. And whereas the City of Morgantown, with support from the Metropolitan Theater Commission and now the Cultural Arts Commission, have operated the Met for over 20 years, investing critical capital resource to ensure the Metropolitan Theater continues to serve the community. And whereas we want to recognize and celebrate this incredible milestone on the 100th anniversary of the Metropolitan Theater and reaffirm our commitment to keep the Met going strong as an important contributor to Morgantown's economic and tourism development and for the quality of life of all our residents. Now, therefore, I, Joe Abogonam, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, and behalf of City Council, want to thank the many people and organizations in our community and our city staff who have all contributed to ensuring the Metropolitan Theater has been the cultural anchor of downtown Morgantown for 100 years and proclaim the month of July 2024 to be Metropolitan Theater Month.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good work. Thank you. Thank you again, and we'll see you in July for all things Met and Don Knotts.
Next, we will have a presentation correspondence from our Morgantown Police Chief, Mr. Chief Powell.
I don't know what the expectations were when I happened in, like, dark winter, any really elaborate presentation relying on my wits and written words a little bit here. So, unlike before, normally I speak sort of candidly and sort of off script most of the time. I find myself more comfortable doing it that way, but I have prepared a little bit of a presentation, a little bit of a speech or talk, whatever you want to call it, to tell you and maybe shed some light on, on the Police Department, what's going on with the Morgantown Police Department. During the recent years, the Morgantown Police Department has dealt with its fair share of controversies and criticisms originating both from internal and external sources. This in turn has caused many community members to have concerns regarding the department and its effectiveness in providing quality service. I am here today to provide to City Council and members of the community with a snapshot into the department with the hopes of reassuring them of our functionality and effectiveness, as well as our continued commitment to the highest quality of service to the City of Morgantown. So, I always kind of, when I give presentations and I talk to community groups, which I've had the pleasure of doing on several occasions, most of that time is spent just basically explaining the department. Because what I find is, nobody really knows what we do, nobody knows how it functions, nobody knows our structure, or really got any concept that we're like an organization. We're not just some group of people haphazardly going about their jobs. So, the Morgantown Police Department is allotted 79 officers. Currently, we are at 59 officers. We have a allotted civilian staff of 15, we're currently at 14. In the process of hiring an additional civilian person who is actually, we're in the process of interviewing for that position right now. And our hiring process, as it exists today, is much different than it existed three years ago. Basically, we test three times a year. The requirements haven't changed, the standards haven't changed. We remain committed to maintaining those standards, the understanding that they're there for a reason, and any lowering of those standards will then in turn lower the quality of service we provide and the quality of officers that serve you. It's very important that that is maintained regardless, regardless of our numbers. Something that I take a great deal of pride in is, despite the fact that we are so low in our numbers, our calls for service hasn't changed much over three years. Our, our production hasn't changed much over those three years. And I'll, and I'll go over the last three years for you, numbers-wise, because I know many people value numbers. So, in 2022, we responded to 30,410 calls for service. In '23, we responded to 32,359 calls for service, a difference of about close to 3,000 calls upwards. In 2024, currently, halfway through the year, we responded to 15,699 calls for service, which is relatively in line with the previous year's 32,000 calls for service, almost exactly, almost exactly. These aren't made up numbers. As far as arrests go, in 2022, 631 arrests from Martin Hart, and '23, 756 arrests. In 2024, currently, halfway through the year, 389 arrests. This is actually on track to exceed last year's arrest numbers. Citations for 2022, non-traffic, 323. Traffic citations, 1,382. We had in 2023, I'm sorry, 512 non-traffic citations, which is an increase by over 200, and 922 traffic citations was actually a decrease. In 2024, currently, as we stand halfway through the year, 256 non-traffic-related citations, which is in line with last year's total at the end of the year. We had 833 traffic citations, which, if things continue, will almost triple if it continues in traffic citations by the end of 2024. Foot patrols, 1,683 foot patrols 2022, with 751 of those foot patrols occurring in the downtown area. 2023, 2,703 foot patrols were conducted in the year of that, of '23, with 1,429 of those foot patrols occurring in the downtown area. This year, currently, foot patrols are at 1,014, a little less than half, 765 are downtown, which is exactly half of last year's. So, that's our activity. Those are the numbers. I'm not going to go over numbers that we've supplied to the FBI as it relates to crimes and major crimes, but I have noticed in my career as a deputy chief, as a chief, those numbers don't really change all that much. They don't really, they don't really have that much significance in the totality of things. Our numbers in property crimes, our numbers in violent crimes, our numbers with respect to UCR reported crimes, don't fluctuate much year in, year out. It's the same, doesn't change. I can tell you that our response hasn't changed, and I can tell you that our response times haven't changed. And if they have, I would say they've changed by probably give or take a minute, depending on which statistical variant you want to use, from three minutes, 3.29 minutes to 4.1 minutes. You tell me if that's significant, I don't know. That's the state of your department, and that's 20 officers down as it stands right now. So, I feel inclined to speak a little bit about challenges that we're facing as a department, as I see them, and what are more significant challenges than others. Number one challenge that I think that we face currently is recruitment and retention. And this is not something that's unique to Morgantown. Any department in this country, I think, is experiencing similar problems, similar challenges, including other local agencies. For the losses, this year, three, that I can anticipate for sure. I can tell you that within the next five years, I project, my best guess and estimate, through attrition, we will probably lose about five. Now, that's not accounting for the officer that wants to follow his girlfriend across the country and take a job somewhere else, or an officer that finds a better opportunity somewhere else more in line with their educational abilities, and just wants simply to improve their, their situation. Those are things that I cannot account for, so perhaps give or take plus or minus two to that five, the five-year period. Currently, to address some of these issues, and I've spoken to this before in the past, we've taken a lot of steps, a lot of steps that are both, are standardized more or less through profession, and some of which are a little bit outside of the box thinking. At least, I attribute it to out of the box thinking, maybe that's me being a little bit ragged, being a little bit raggy, but we've offered bonuses, both in the form of internal recruitment. We provide an incentive to officers that actually recruit other people to come work for us and actually get hired, they receive a cash bonus. Recently, we instituted a bonus for officers that are already certified in the state that amounts to about $10,000 bonus, which is pretty significant. We have a very active social media presence. We've made efforts to upgrade our webpage, make it more appealing. Obviously, you all know about the participation in the 30 by 30 program where we try to encourage female officers to apply and seek out professions with our department, or careers with our department. We had, have, last year alone, we sponsored, we actually hosted two open houses, one for the general public, one for females specifically, both of which I presented and spoke about our department at great length, the benefits, and tried to talk up and sell the department as best I could to those. And I think it had a positive impact. I believe that we actually saw a little bit of an uptick in our participation in testing. As always, our officers are attending job fairs throughout the region, not just the state. And what I'd like to sort of use this forum today with respect to recruiting is sort of just to say, we really encourage citizen participation and recruitment. I think recruitment and your Police Department as a whole is part of the community, and it's a very important part of the community. And I think that if citizens actually went out and actively identified people that might be good officers, approached those people and said to them, hey, have you ever thought about being a police officer? If people who are mentoring other people, or people who are in positions where they're advising other people, could use that as a way to sort of talk to people. It's just not our responsibility because the role of the police officer is to benefit the citizens and the community as a whole. So I think ownership is really important among our community with respect to who it is, who it is that is their police officers. It's very easy to criticize police officers when you don't have a hand in who is your police officers. It becomes a little more difficult when you're recommending people to become police officers, and then they become police officers. So, I'm going to put it to the community, who do you want to see being a policeman? Who do you want to see doing this job? And if, if you know somebody or believe that somebody would do good at this job, actively recruit them for our office. I mean, it's, it's not hard. I mean, you can talk to a guy and say, hey, there's a job up here at McDonald's, go, go cook at McDonald's. Your kid, sitting at home playing video games, maybe they'd need a good police officer. Only you would know. But I would say it's all our responsibility to select good officers, to try to encourage people that are good people to be police officers. The other major issue that we are tackling on a regular basis is the houseless substance abuse and mental health issues. Look, Morgantown isn't any different than any other community I have ever been to. I don't know if any of you have traveled or have been other places, but I've observed very similar problems just about everywhere I go. None of them have become a, with some magic solution to cure these societal issues, societal But, that being said, we're not shying away from at least acknowledging that we have a responsibility in helping solve those issues. And to that end, I think we are really doing our very best to establish very good working relationships with other agencies, other stakeholders, community members, social service agencies. I don't know of too many, with the exception of maybe individualized people that may have their own agendas with respect to the negative things they say about us. My experience is that we are working very hard to ensure that those relationships are solid and that we're, we're, we're doing our part and carrying through with, with our, with our part of the deal with respect to dealing with these individuals with these very serious problems. We're not handed in any way that I know of. It's not our policy, it's not how we operate, never has been. And anybody who tries to paint us in that light is flat out lying to you. I mean, I don't know how else to categorize it, that's what it is. So, we have worked at establishing, as So, we have worked at establishing, as I said, very close working relationships with numerous, numerous outside agencies that are involved in providing social services, providing any type of service, to those that are suffering from these societal issues. And I also want to take an opportunity, that being said, to thank and praise our social worker. Because, I don't know if any of you know this, but us having a social worker, the department having a social worker, is kind of a big deal. It's not, it's not a common thing in law enforcement. And having Kelly Rice has been really a benefit. And I wouldn't have felt compelled to say that had I not been made aware of some recent sort of personal attacks that have been made against her. And I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about Kelly. Because of her, we've established really good working relationships with peers in recovery, Mon Health, Hazel's House, WVU, WMSN, Build for Zero, Mon County Health, Chestnut Ridge and Valley Mental Health, ACT Team, the Coalition to End Homelessness, Public Defender's Office, and WVU, WVU's So We're Living. All of those relationships are directly attributable, attributable to the efforts of Kelly. And Kelly has, during her short time here, which we're coming up on a year now, has done amazing work and has connected numerous individuals to services to address whatever problem it is they may be struggling with, whether it be substance abuse or mental health issues, whatever it may be. And I just, I just wanted to reiterate her value to us and point out that it's something that the city as a whole should take pride in, because as a department, we take great pride in having. So much so that I gave her a card yesterday. So, that's sort of what we're struggling with. Those are what I see are the issues, and sort of how, what we're doing, because we are doing stuff to address those. There are other things related to the state of the department, things like equipment. Those are things that I find to be more administrative issues. We're struggling with our vehicles right now, but I'm very confident that we're finding solutions to that, based on the last three meetings I've had on the topic. I think we've, we've come to some reasonable solutions for our fleet issues. We have a very aging fleet. A problem I tried to address a little bit with our recent contract with Enterprise and Lease Program, that wasn't sufficient, so we're going another route with the purchase of some additional vehicles in the upcoming years. I think, just to make you all aware, I don't know, you may or may not be aware of the structure of the department right now. Right now, our department is broken up basically patrol-wise into two shifts, day and night, working 12-hour shifts. We have four supervisors on each shift. We have an SSU unit, which believe it or not, still exists, headed by Sergeant Balderson, who's very capable. It consists of four officers and Sergeant Balderson and Kelly Rice. Our staff services are made up of four individuals, myself included, Deputy Chief Chris Reamer, Captain Chad Reyes, and we have one civilian that's involved in our staff services, retired Lieutenant Bob Gilmore, who is in charge of our grant writing and procurement and logistical stuff. So, that's the department. We have a detective division consisting of four officers, actually a supervisor, and three detectives. I'm hoping to get that back up, if we get up to the reasonable amount of manning that we have. It's tough. We're low manpower-wise. A lot of the structure, a lot of the decisions that I make as an administrator are really based on that. I mean, it really comes down to what I have and what I can do with what I have, while trying to maintain some semblance of normalcy within a department, and trying to not put too much on to my guys and girls. It's tough, especially being down to 20. But I'm very hopeful, and I'm very confident, that some of the stuff that we're doing, and I think as long as we maintain our pride, our professionalism, our standards, over a certain amount of time, that we'll be recognized by those seeking careers in this field. I think it'll pay off. You may not see immediate results, you may not be able to quantify it right away, but I think in the long run, all those things are going to help with our struggles with respect to recruitment and retention. That's about all I got. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service, Chief Powell. We appreciate all you do for the community. I only, I do have one question. Now, the 59, does that include the people that are at the academy currently?
Yeah, well, no, actually, we have, we have one at the academy.
Just one, okay. I thought maybe there was a few more.
And it's a female, so.
Yeah. We swore in last week.
How many females do we have right now?
Currently, five. Part of that, unfortunately, part of the attrition sort of speculation that I have, we may be losing one of those to federal agencies very soon. But, I mean.
That's what happens with good officers.
That's what happens. Sometimes, people find better opportunities elsewhere. That's the price to do the business, I guess.
So I have a challenge back to you. So, we need to help with recruitment and finding people that we really would like to see on the force. You all, in the past, we have worked with on legislation. And the one that most comes to mind is working with synthetic marijuana, where bath salts or whatever the items that were for sale in the downtown that were not benign but could actually kill you. And when we were working on that, what ended up happening was, instead of listing the exact formula for whatever was in this material, we ended up working with the legislature and working with the police department, and we ended up with something that identified what the substance acted like, rather than just the formula, because the formula kept changing. So I really appreciated at that time, having opportunity to work with you all. And one challenge is to think of what all you would like to see next, and how we could best work with you. You do not have to be top of the mind with it right now, but as you, as you move forward, or maybe you have something right now, but.
Well, I'll tell you, to be honest with you, I think the greatest struggle we have in our line of work, right now, is perception versus reality, and the pushing out of information that isn't accurate. I think certain voices get heard, and they rise up here, and other voices may not be so loud, may not even be talking at all. I think reserving judgment, maybe being supportive from the get-go, maybe having an understanding that things aren't as black and white as they're sometimes portrayed, and having that understanding to start with would be helpful. And also, I think when we, I think it's difficult for officers, sometimes they feel conflicted. And the reason that they feel conflicted is they're being asked sometimes to do things that they don't feel maybe is necessarily something they should be doing, or something that they're within their rights to do. And sometimes they're right, sometimes they're wrong. It's up to me to sort of guide them in that direction. But I think having an understanding of what we can and cannot do with respect to the law, with respect to dealing with citizens, and dealing with people, and what it takes for us to be effective in our jobs. I think education is the biggest thing. I think if you educate people, if you can, we try, but sometimes not too effective. But those are the things, I mean, it's just simple stuff. I think if you, I think if people in general came from a, from a perspective of less of an adversarial relationship and more of a part of a whole, you know, I think promotion of that concept. We're all trying to accomplish the same stuff. The police aren't out here, we're not out here trying to arrest everybody. We're not out here trying to put people in jail all the time. What we're trying to do is help people. And I think that gets lost a lot. I think a lot of the rhetoric that's going around, it's been going around for years now, the last three years, I think is harmful, because I don't know of any officer I've ever known of that ever had that attitude. Most officers believe in what they're doing, and I think it's helpful when the public and elected officials reflect that belief in them. Does that make sense?
Well, we certainly need a good police force, and we certainly believe in a police force. So anything you can do to convey that support and belief would be much appreciated, because pretty much any citizen that I've spoken with the last couple of years wants, wants, wants some policing, because otherwise, we're chaos. So.
And I would hope, it's been my experience, the vast majority of people that I have spoken to that have had interactions with our officers have had very positive things to say, including those where the results for them weren't all that positive. At the very least, they're saying, "Your officers treated me, you know, they arrested me, but they treated me well, or they weren't, you know, they weren't." So those are things that I kind of hang my hat on. I wanted to give one other plug before, because I failed to mention it during my speech. I wanted to reiterate the value of the training facility, and also give you a little bit of insight into what's going on there. I have pages and pages of scheduled usage of that facility from the day it opened to now, spreadsheet of the activity. Two people are actively working in that facility. I have probably close to $10,000 worth of committed this year contracts of people wishing to use our facility, becoming members, so to speak, of the facility. Last week, we had three other federal agencies come, inspect our facility, and are probably going to be committing to us within the next year. And I believe two local agencies are going to be added to that fold in the next couple of years, which should bring us an additional 7,500 as far as revenue goes with respect to the facility and its usage. So, it's not a money maker, but it's, I think, it's getting to where I'm comfortable with it, and I'm very happy with it, I'm very proud of it, and I think, I think it's a feather in the city's cap that we have, I really do. And I can't, I can't tell you how much, how happy I am that we have this. It affects our agency in a lot of ways, and a lot of ways that are not measured in dollar value, but they're measured in things like morale, recruitment, and just having a place to go to do things like open houses and other things. I think it's invaluable. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that, before I step down. Thanks. Anybody else have any questions, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to get off track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from Catholic Charities, the CEO and President Mark Phillips. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll try to be fairly brief. My intention is for this to be a sort of an introductory conversation about emergency housing, emergency shelter in Morgantown, with the opportunity to talk more in days and weeks as we learn more about, about what it looks like. So my name is Mark Phillips. I'm president and CEO of Catholic Charities West Virginia. Catholic Charities is probably the largest nonprofit social service agency in West Virginia, with 19 offices. We are also in three hospitals, and we do a mobile food pantry in six counties as well. Our largest office is in Wheeling. Morgantown here is actually our second largest location, in Hazel's House of Hope, where we have West Virginia Earth of Free, we have Child Care Resource Center, we're doing migration and refugee services. We also do emergency assistance, emergency financial assistance for people who need help with the utility or rent payments, and we have a food pantry there. So lots of good work here in Morgantown at Hazel's House. But I talk about us being, not about programs, but about purpose. So those things are what we do here, because we're looking to respond to community needs to alleviate symptoms of poverty and to advocate for systemic change. That's really what we try to do, to respond to those needs in each community instead of a one-size-fits-all approach and coming somewhere and saying like, "Congratulations, we're here." We really want to respond to what the need is in the community. To that extent, we got contacted, I guess a little over three months ago, to talk about what it might look like for Catholic Charities to help to run or to operate independently, emergency shelter at Hazel's House of Hope. So as you likely know, that's something that has been done by Bartlett Housing. That's been up and down there. They've had some difficulty operationally and retaining the funding to do it successfully in that space. So recognizing that emergency shelter was a need in Morgantown. Some of the board members at Hazel House came to us and asked, "Could we talk about this, to see what it would look like for Catholic Charities to do those operations?" Catholic Charities has worked with individuals experiencing homelessness for over 100 years. We have a day shelter in Wheeling. We've also been operating emergency winter shelter there the past few years. And two years ago, in the 2223, we helped to run the emergency shelter here at Hazel House. So we were a pretty natural fit for that discussion. Just to let you know what it looks like a little bit, emergency housing is not intended to be a long-term solution. This is intended to be an intervention that helps people move toward housing when they're experiencing some sort of crisis. This may be an individual housing crisis, where they've lost a job and get evicted. It may be something that's lasted a little bit longer, and they have some sort of barriers like addiction or mental health, and we might advocate movement to treatment before we're able to help connect them to more permanent housing. Emergency shelter is not a revenue-generating service. Not much of what we do is a revenue-generating service. So we're always looking to foundation and community support to help solve these problems. So when a municipality has any kind of issue that you can't solve yourself, you look to contract that out and see how it could be solved. So when you need paving done, you go and you contract a paver to do the work. When you're responding to homelessness crisis, you look for a social service agency to help to work on that. Catholic Charities would help to fill that gap, and we would hope to be able to find both city, county, state, federal, independent financial support from foundations, to give it a piece that together to do that service here in Morgantown. So we've run the basic numbers, working together with Bartlett. Their board has been really helpful still, in seeing what this might look like for us to take over that part of that business. It looks like emergency shelter in Morgantown at Hazel House could be run for about $450,000 to $500,000 a year. Almost all of this is personnel costs, it's just people. So when you're talking about 24/7, 365, if you had just two people there all the time making 15 bucks an hour with benefits, you're already at about $350,000. making 15 bucks an hour with benefits, you're already at about $350,000 just to do that part of it. That's not to help out with rent or treatment, whatever else they need. So it's an expensive service to run, but we think a really critical one to help keep people off the streets and moving toward a situation where they can get to housing. The first step is trying to stabilize their environment so that they can start to see a future for themselves that they can see. We talk about this as a philosophy of accompaniment, just being with somebody in a safe space to help them see what's coming next. Of that $450,000 to $500,000, there's a commitment already from the West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness for about $167,000. That was intended for Bartlett. We're in communication with that group already to see how that can be reallocated to another agency, if that's Catholic charities, right? Again, we're happy to do it. But if it's another agency that can step up and provide that same service, we're supportive of that as well. We really just want to partner to make this work. It's going to take several entities to make it happen. You will need city and county support. You will need the support from the Coalition to End Homelessness and the state. And you will need private, individual, and foundation support to make that all work. As I said, we're happy to respond to that need if it's something that the city wants to talk more about and see how it can be supported moving forward. We'd like to do something that looks more like a three-year commitment, not like just a one-year if we can, just because these things take so long to put together. But we recognize that, you know, Bartlett's situation is difficult, and if we need to step in a little bit more quickly with just something that looks like one year, we're happy to do that as well. I've spoken with Council Trumbull already about this a little bit, some members of the Hazel House board, some of the city staff, about what this might look like. If you're, if the city is interested in looking at next steps, I didn't bring the detailed budget. I wanted to make sure we had more opportunity offline to look at, see what that would look like, and what the commitment of the city and county as a partnership might be first. Happy to answer any questions about current operations in the shelter, what it might look like, anything. If anybody has anything now?
Matt?
Good.
I'm curious to know where you are in the negotiations and what are the next steps? What are your expectations in terms of the timeline?
Sure. So I've spoken with West Virginia Coalition to End Homelessness three times in the last week and a half. They're working on the state side to see what this would look like to be able to reallocate that funding. It may be a process where they would have to pull it from Bartlett and then allow other entities to apply. If we were the only entity that would apply, that would make it quicker. But that might take a couple of weeks, several weeks, knowing the state, to get that going. This is, you know, my intention to have an introductory conversation here. I'd like to do that same thing with the county commission in the next couple of weeks, if possible.
They're behind you.
Okay.
There's two. Why don't you just raise your hand?
Yeah. And then work together to see, what does the partnership look like to make this work? If we had, you know, if we had the funding, you know, if council today said, "You know what? Don't worry about the Coalition to End Homelessness. Don't worry about, you know, the county. We'll just take care of it. Like, here's a check. We'll start." But I understand that's not how it works. So we're operationally, we're ready to go. We have an individual who we've already spoken to who has the capacity to run that facility. We would work with Bartlett more than likely to pull some of their current staff over and hire them as Catholic charities staff. So we're maybe entrepreneurial to a fault, so we're ready to go as long as we can piece the funding together. Those bits may take a bit, but we're happy to do it.
Just to clarify, so I understand. What I'm hearing you say is that you have the administrative structure in place and you are capable of taking this on. What the hang-up now is the funding to support that structure.
Yeah. That's, money's the easy part, right? Yeah. No, we, Catholic charities has about 125 statewide employees. We have a pretty good administrative structure for a nonprofit. And as I said, we work with agencies all around the state. We work with every continuum of care. We know what this looks like. So we're pretty confident about our capacity to do it. There are some things to figure out on Hazel House's side, but we know that if the funding falls into place, we can work with Coalition to End Homelessness and municipal entities. We think that we're ready to go. And then we'd spend, we're really looking for that state, city, county support for that first year. And then we would work in that first year to try to secure commitments from individuals and foundations for out-years, so that as it goes from, say, year one to year three, the commitment from the city and county would decrease as we're able to find private support to fill in those gaps. And we think it's there.
How confident are you in the amounts of money that you named?
Pretty good, yeah. I think, I mean, we're, I'd say we're nine, we're within 10% of the total dollar amount, for sure. That commitment from Coalition would be good. At 167, that's the amount that they have set. On the city and county side, again, we're looking to make up that additional $300,000 to $350,000 of how it looks. We're happy to do this on a reversible basis, so that if there were a dollar amount set and we did not use all of that funding, it would remain with the city and county.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just for my clarification, you're saying within, aside from the first year, as you move forward, the goal is, you think you're capable of becoming self-sustaining in terms of collecting and funding funding?
Yeah. So it'll take a bit. And we haven't tried to fund something like this in and around Mon County before. But my sense is, at least in working with, working with individuals on the Hazel House board, some of the folks that have worked to put together that project, we think that we could find commitment from businesses, individuals, and foundations to make it go and to hopefully put a dent in homelessness crisis in this area.
There are other funds available. It wasn't just state funding through the Coalition or through the state that Bartlett House had lost. There's also some federal grants available, so those would help to offset some of that in the future, hopefully. But it's already passed the filing period for this year, like you can't apply.
Yeah, right now it's around the time that continuing to care around the state are putting out their plans for the next year. So as that funding becomes available again, we can apply for different types of funding that Bartlett Housing did not have access to because they had lost it previously.
I had heard that 450, 500 figure several times, so, yeah. Although I'm sure you've done your due diligence on it. But it is something I've heard several times about the total funding for the shelter. So, yeah, one of, I think Danielle was touching on one of the things that I was going to ask about, but I think I've heard about this structured in such a way in which, similar to how you guys helped us with the warming shelters before, where you took on basically fiduciary responsibilities. But that's, is that not what we're talking about here? We're talking about full management of the shelter space.
Yeah, we would run it entirely. So speaking plainly, I'm not certain that partnership with Bartlett on this part of it would be effective. So we might find ways to partner with Bartlett in some of the other things that they're doing. But with the situation in Hazel House right now, I think it would have to be us.
Yeah. One of my biggest concerns that we've talked about a lot is even if we were to get them to a recovery point, the sort of clawing back to make sure those grants are still awarded was an open question.
Yeah, it's tough. They've done, they've done lots of good work, but, you know, stuff they've been in a little bit. So now, ensuring that continuing funding, we have a pretty good relationship with these state funders already, so it's a little bit easier for us than for Bartlett. And we've been really happy to have their help to understand what it looks like on the administrative side, so that we can operationalize it quickly.
Do you have, like, experience with HUD, receiving HUD grants and applying for them?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I know you guys operate within the Wheeling COC, obviously. Do you have much experience operating within the balance of state COC and other areas?
Yeah, we do. As I said, because of our statewide presence, we've worked with all of them, one way or another. We're working with Emergency Food and Shelter all over the state. We're increasingly serving homeless populations in Charleston and Parkersburg. So, yeah, we've been, we've been pretty active in this. And increasingly so as municipalities across the state take a harder line stance against individuals experiencing homelessness.
Understandable. So I guess my biggest concern right now, probably not a question you can necessarily answer, but is the attention to the West Run facility? We paid a lot of attention to the emergency shelter for obvious reasons. But my concern is what has happened in the West Run facility since we've kind of obviously been in high alert mode as far as Bartlett as an organization and the sort of administration, administrative burdens that they've been under with the significant changes that have happened and loss of funding. So, you know, like I said, I don't know if you're in any position to speak on the West Run facility, but is that facility and the permanent supportive housing programs and temporary housing programs, are those still going to remain intact? Is that going to be just what Bartlett does if this were to go through?
I, you know, I'm not on Bartlett's board. I've been speaking with them quite a bit over the past couple of months. I believe that's still their intention. We recognize that they're filling an important community need there, and if it looked like we could provide additional administrative or fiduciary support to ensure that those services still remained in the area, we would talk about it.
Okay. That's great. Well, I appreciate you coming here and speaking with us and all the work that you guys have done here in Wheeling and the other places I've heard about.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Appreciate the two staff. I think two staff is a really nice minimum there.
Yes, for sure.
And really important not to have one staff. So just know that we appreciate that number.
Yeah, absolutely. Even in our offices where we're just, you know, running a food pantry or doing emergency utility assistance, it's two staff.
Yeah. Good. And I guess, so once you have funding, how soon after that could you ramp up? I think you made reference to that, but if you could just kind of reiterate that.
If we had a check today, July 2nd, I'd say...
Yeah, we don't have a check quite yet, but, yeah.
Not even one of those comically oversized ones, if you bring up none of that?
We'll work on it.
Okay. I think we'd have, we have to hire the folks and make sure that we have the staff available to make sure it runs. If all of the current Bartlett staff at the shelter moved over to Catholic charities, that would be a lot easier. So if that were the case, I'd say we'd be ready in about a month.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you for taking the time to come and present.
Thanks so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'll just, I'll leave. I don't hand out flyers at the beginning. I used to be a school teacher, and I know that everybody just reads this instead of listening. Council, Council Trumbull has my contact information, but I'll have business cards here as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being willing to come this evening. It's nice to be able to speak out in the open instead of saying, "We're in talks with an organization who has some experience." I'm sure that was probably like the worst kept secret in Morgantown, but I appreciate you coming and answering questions because I've been telling all of these guys that we've been talking. It's nice to, nice to have your face to put with your name and have your cooperation.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that closes our correspondence. Now we are on to a public hearing, an ordinance amending the fiscal year '24-'25 annual budget of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here, too, and made part of the ordinance, and the same applies to the coal severance fund. If you wish to speak on this and only this, now is your time to do so. Open the floor. Once. Once. All right, close it. Onto unfinished business. First, we have consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year '24-'25 annual budget of the city of Morgantown, as shown in the revised budget attached here, too, and made part of the ordinance, and the same applies to the coal severance fund. Second. All right, and discussion? No? All right. If there's a clerk, would be so kind.
Yes. Bill Kowicki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghanim?
Yes. Passes six-zero. Next, we have boards and commissions. Driving in.
I think we had some from our last meeting. Isn't that correct? Yeah. So I would like to nominate Rachel Vetti Anderson, the Civil Police Review and Advisory Board.
Second.
By acclamation?
Yes.
Do you want to do one?
Nominate Megan Gandy to the Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board.
Second.
By acclamation?
Yes.
Of course. To nominate Dottie, Dottie Bourgeur, I believe?
Perfect.
To the Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board.
Second.
By acclamation?
Thank you.
By acclamation, all right. That closes our unfinished business. Now we move on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Do I have a sheet, sign-up sheet?
There's no one on the sign-up sheet.
No one on the sign-up sheet. All right, well, I'll also open the floor. For anybody wishing to come up and speak, please remember, if you choose to speak, to state your name and address. Please.
Hi, guys. Time is here, but it's on zeros.
I got it.
Okay. I'll talk fast. Just go. Okay, cool. So first of all, congratulations on your promotion. So hopefully you will enjoy this for the next year. It's kind of a tough job. I wanted to talk, there's actually two topics. I don't know if you'll have time to go through them both, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the police situation, and I'm glad that Eric Powell's still here. Last year, I came here in July, and I mentioned to you all that I thought the most important thing you could do this year was to resolve the police and fire disputes. And that's because I think getting to a point where we no longer have this situation, this is the first step in trying to develop a cooperative organization with the police and fire and the community. And I have seen communities where the police and fire are heavily involved in the community. You know, they go to events, and that those organizations are talking with the residents, and that's the kind of situation that I'm hoping this town can get to. And it's not just within the city of Morgantown with the sheriffs and state as well, but, you know, starting here and having that dispute resolved is very positive. And I also wanted to just tell a real quick story about, this is a plug for the police department, Morgantown Police Department. I take care of an elderly woman. She's actually 93 now. She has dementia. And about two... 93 now. She has dementia. And about two years ago, she was still driving and she had no business driving. She was, she would drive the wrong way on the interstate. She would drive at night without her lights on. She would drive 10 miles per hour in a 40 mile per hour zone. She would get lost. And I was living in Ohio at the time. The Morgantown Police Department would, they never cited her. They never gave her a fine. They would take her to the hospital. They would call me, living in Ohio, and say, "Look, this is, this is our situation. This is what she just did." And they were actually wonderful in terms of taking care of this woman. This is the kind of work that, you know, we want our police to do. And I can attest to the fact that they were very, very helpful in taking care of this, this elderly woman. They would go back and actually check on her, you know, a few days later to see if she was okay after she'd come home from the hospital and, and get situated again. So I just wanted to thank your department. I think that was just wonderful. I do appreciate that. So, you know, you can say progress, but thank you very much for that. Then, and the other thing I wanted to talk about, so that's, that's it for my plug for the police for right now. The other thing I wanted to talk about was getting some recycling containers downtown. We have a lot going on, the Great Race and other things, the walk, art walk, and just a lot of things. Parades going on downtown. When I come here, generally I've got, you know, a drink with me and I take it back to my house to recycle it because there's no recycling containers here. So I would just ask to consider putting in some recycling containers, just the ones where, you know, where you, you put a bottle in so that we can at least get some of those out of the, out of the land, the land, landfills. So that's my, that's my request on that. And that's all I've got for tonight, but thank you guys very much and I'll see you probably soon.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
John Trumbull, 141 Charles Avenue. Good evening. First and foremost, I wanted to express my deepest and most sincere embarrassment and disappointment with this body of people. But I guess that's not a surprise. I don't feel like your choices for leadership are correct for our community. And I hope that you are all ready to do the difficult and uncomfortable work that this community needs from you, not just the fun stuff. I know which one of, which ones of you already are and they're waiting for the rest of you. Morgantown deserves an elected and strong mayor. I yield my time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? All right, that closes the public portion. No special committee reports. We have nothing for our consent agenda. That moves us on to new business. First we have a consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the fiscal year '24 to '28 five-year consolidation plan, the fiscal year '24 annual action plan, and the '24 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Representative Robin Hess to address this item with council.
Hi, everyone. I'm Robin Hess. I'm the grant writer for the city of Morgantown. And one of my duties is the CDBG program. I kind of want to just, I'm not going to go over all the documentations that I recently sent you on. Thank you for Kristina for bringing that on to them. This is something we did not throw together. We've been working on this project, our CDBG consultants and myself, with the help of the city manager, assistant city manager, probably since November. Everything we have to follow are the rules and regulations of HUD. And one of the things we did, if anyone walked past my office around Christmas time, January and February, and it's not, do not disturb on my door, we were sitting in Zoom meetings. We were lucky enough to get surveys out to the community. We went through the newspaper. We went through the website. We went through calling and this type of thing. We also, I think by the time it was all done, there was 263s. And we also had a, we contacted all the services, social service agencies. We talked to the bankers. We talked to developers. We talked to just about everybody that we could. Some people didn't want to talk to us. They didn't want to discuss what, you know, the questions we had to ask them. And everything that we had done, everything was confidential. You know, we didn't ask, well, we knew their names and this, but it wasn't going to be put out in public because they could say whatever they wanted to say. And the biggest one question was, what is the problems with the city of Morgantown right now when it comes to housing? Everyone said that just about everyone that we talked to had talked about the fair housing and in Morgantown. You either have the million dollar home or you have the really, really low income home and there's nothing in between. So if you have a young couple who might over the years have saved up $50, $60,000 to put down on a home, they can't do it. It's always enough, you can't do that in Morgantown anymore. There's none of the in-between housing that we're really lacking. And this report is what exactly HUD wants to know, what the major issues all were and how we can, can kind of take care of them and this type of thing. I really was impressed with, we talked to, we talked to just about everybody you can think of, the veterans groups, the, the senior citizens, the coalition, the coalition. We talked to Fairland Housing. So everybody had the same thing to say. There is no really fair housing in the city of Morgantown right now. So what are we going to do about this? Well, we're hoping that if these documentations get approved by HUD, which I see no reason for that to happen, then what we'd like to do, and in talking to the assistant city manager and the city manager, evidently you all before I became the grant writer and I got kind of given the CDBG program, you did have some kind of things that would, that helped people gather new housing. You know, there was money set aside for such things as, you know, if you needed a new roof or if you needed this, you had a down payment on the house. You had programs for that. What we, excuse me, what we would like to do is to take the next five years, which is what the comp plan is about, and give all of our energies and all of the CDBG programs toward that and coming up with some ideas of how we can help the community and this type of thing. I'll give you an example. We had a lady who was over in First Ward and she's an 80-year-old lady who has no family around her. She owns her own home. She lives on social security. She needs a new roof. She doesn't know how to do that. She doesn't have the money to do that. So there are problems out there when it comes to the different kind of housing. And I'm just going to kind of, I'm not even going to go over the summary and everything because there's so much involved, but the things that we came up with were the analysis of the impediments, which is what HUD kind of talks about when it comes to fair housing. And I have, and I probably should have brought this up to begin with. Morgantown is probably, I believe, the third largest city in the state of West Virginia. You, as an entitlement community, I was shocked when I took the program over. Our budget for this year is only $465,000. That's all we get as an entitlement community. So we, when I took the position as the grant writer and doing this project, I, I kind of wanted to know why. I mean, we're supposed to be the town in Pennsylvania, in West Virginia. And come to find out that you receive your entitlement monies based on the population. Has nothing to do with low to high income. It's the population. Well, the problem with the population is sometimes when I do a federal grant, the grantee will allow me to use the metropolitan Morgantown area as the census kind of thing. HUD doesn't do that. You cannot count the students because if you counted the students, HUD would request from us, the city of Morgantown, every student that comes in would have to show their parents' income tax forms stating that you are dependent, you're not dependent. At that point in time, we could, we could count, we could count them, but we can't do that. And we've tried to numerous ways. I've talked to HUD at the federal level. I've talked to HUD through the district level. The city managers talked to them because we, we were always wondering why. Because the other entitlement communities, their yearly budget is over a million dollars a year. Well, we can do more with a million dollars than we can with $456,000. But somehow I, if anyone can figure out how to get that changed, I'd like to know it because we've talked to just about everybody and that's, that's just how it is. It's doing the population. So if we don't have 20,000 more people come, that's, that's just the way it's going to be. I know. But anyhow, the impediment, potential impediments, the fair housing education outreach, there's a continuing need to educate people about their rights under Fair Housing Act and to raise community awareness, to further fair housing choices, especially for low-income residents, minorities, and disabled population. We have continuing need for affordable rental. We had a lot of the people that did the survey said their problem is there's a family of four living in a rundown rental house and they're paying $1,200 a month. There's something not fair to that. And this is something that we're hoping through what we do in the next five years with the HUD comprehensive plan, we might be able to turn it around just a little bit. Are we going to take care of it fully? I don't think so, but that's something we just need to start discussing. Continuing need for affordable housing for sale, the medium, the medium value and cost to purchase and maintain a single home in Morgantown that is decent, safe, sound, has increased significantly to over $331,000, which limits the choice of housing for lower-income housing. Continuing need for accessible housing units that are not for sale or rent, and older buildup urban environment. There is a lack of accessible housing units and developable sites in the city of Morgantown since 14, 48.17% of the city's housing units were built probably over 50 years ago. And they do not have the accessibility features and 9.2% of the city's population, according to HUD, is classified as disabled. So there, you've got something missing there somewhere. Continuing need to improve private lending insurance practices. The Home Mortgage Disclosure Act, data suggests that there may be a disparity between the approval rates of home mortgage loans originated from whites and those originated from minority applicants. And finally, there is a lack of financial resources. The federal government continues to reduce the amount of CDBG home and funds for other housing programs in HUD's annual budget, which reduces the allocations to entitlement communities, thus putting a strain on limited financial resources due to the housing crisis and increased unemployment. So in other words, Morgantown isn't the only city-state that has entitlement problems when it comes to getting money and everything. And just about everybody's biggest complaint is the, the lack of equality and fair housing here in the city of Morgantown. So what we're asking you to do, it took us six months to write these documents. We're lucky enough to have a CDG, CDBG consulting firm who really, really, they've been in this business for 30 years and they just about the consulting person for just about every community here in West Virginia as far as HUD is concerned. And they do a really great job in everything. And if you guys have any questions, and I'm hoping you all read through the resolution, this is a really quick turnaround and I apologize for it, but Congress didn't pass the budget until late, so we're almost about four months behind and even HUD monies being getting allocated to begin with. So do you all have any questions?
Move to approve.
Move to second.
Okay, good.
We got you, Robin.
So, once this moves forward and once these funds are allocated, we hope, what would be the next couple of steps for this group or for the city?
I think setting, I know that I talked with the VP of our consulting firm and he would like to sit down with a meeting as soon as all these funds have been appropriated and everything is approved by HUD, to sit down and go over what HUD would like to see as or what we can do following the rules and regulations of the federal government, what we can do to kind of help get the fair housing issue at least brought to the forefront somehow. And, you know, programming is the biggest thing. If we can do some type of programming, rather than give it out for certain projects, kind of keep it internally for programming type things that we, we all can learn from, not just, you know, everyone can learn, you know. And working really closely, I think, with Fairland Housing would help with that as, you know, as the coalition of how, you know, even the transitional housing and this type of thing. And once we get into that, then there's other monies out there that we can go after. Not necessarily HUD, we can go after.
So this is our first step?
This is the first step, yeah. This is the first step. But I think it's time that we heard enough, we heard enough people's negativity when it came to housing in Morgantown that I was amazed. I mean, I know I sat in on these Zooms and, you know, seeing and listening to people really kind of lambaste the, the city of Morgantown for, you know, five hours a day for about six weeks when it came to fair housing because it's really not, you know, it's, it's a problem that I think it's a problem that has continued maybe, it maybe started 20 years ago and it really hasn't decreased. It's, you know, it hasn't decreased. It's kind of going up more because you do have younger people coming here and some of the houses that, you know, we see in the city has kind of taken on, you know, for demolition and, you know, blight and this type of thing. And I know one of the, the congressional directed spending we got, we received in 2024 was $2 million to go into Greymont and start doing things in Lower Greymont with the dilapidation and everything. And we're hoping to put some low-income houses down in there, I hope. Hopefully, that's what we're looking at. So, and I think that's one way that can help us with the congressional directed spending. We've, so far we've been really lucky with getting some. And I think if we continue along that line, which most of the congressional directed spending, when it has, when it comes to that type of thing, it is HUD. Usually everything goes through HUD. So since we're an entitlement community, that kind of gives us a step above everybody else too.
So, just so I'm clear, it looks like there's, there's five projects basically that we're looking to fund with the CDBG funds that we're going after. Is that correct? Or is this from previous year?
This is previous year. Yeah.
Okay. So when we put in this application and receive CD, then we'll open applications ourselves, right, so that other organizations can receive?
Right, yeah. Yeah, 15%, but I have to tell you, I just got a recent letter from HUD that that 15% will probably be going away.
Okay.
To give it out to other, to give it out to nonprofits and everything. The thing with that is I'm used to, we used to be able to pay somewhat of salaries, but now it's down to 26%. And we, you know, 15% of $450,000, $65,000, that's not a lot of money to give out. And we try to give it out to as many people as we can and we, and then there's a lot of people that don't apply for it. I mean, I, when I get word that I, that it's ready to go, I send it out to every nonprofit that's available within the city limits of Morgantown. That's where they kind of get you. I'm sure if, you know, we go the outskirts or into the county, we get rid of the money really easily, but that's just something that doesn't happen. And one thing with CDBG, we also, if we, you know, just because we designated, sometimes when we come back, or Emily brings it back to you all, for a substantial amendment, that's because the party that we gave the money to, where the project we did, didn't get started on time. And it's like, hey, I don't need a red flag because HUD will red flag you if you keep sitting on your money. And that's something you just can't do. You've got to get rid of it right away. So if there's something in like this year's that we, you know, we're not going to be able to spend all that money all at one time, then we will come, I'll come back to, you know, you all to say, "Look, we can't, this isn't going to work." So we can do a substantial amendment to kind of take care of some other things. amendment to kind of take care of some other things. It's not set in, it's not set in stone.
Well, thanks for all your work on this.
Thanks.
It's a lot. And I appreciate you reaching out to the community that you have.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yes. Have you, well, I know the answer to this question, but I keep bringing it up quietly to different people in the city as we have community members coming and asking us for a housing department budgetary that is difficult, but we already have a housing advisory commission. I just looked, they, the last agenda that was posted was August of twenty twenty-three and the last minutes that were posted, so the last proof I have that they actually had a meeting, was March of twenty twenty-three. I would encourage you to start asking if that commission can begin meeting again. I think that they have a lot of.
I didn't even realize we had a commission.
Exactly. I have suggested this to many people as maybe a good first step towards spinning something like this up or getting some movement on housing in our community. So I would, I bring it up to you, it would be a great task for them to help you work on.
If you all know me, I have no problem asking anybody anything.
I do know that, I mean, it's there. Me, too.
No problem, so, yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I'll look into that.
I think it would be repurposing a commission that was working on other things and since they're not working on the other things, repurposing it for this purpose would be an excellent idea.
Mm-hmm. Sounds good.
They're working on university housing, for those of you who are wondering.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill Coecky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes. Passes six zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Trademark Aviation at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Airport Director John Burrow.
Good evening, everybody. This agreement is a new agreement for us. The past agreement, we had for ten years with John Hammack and John did a great job. At the time he took over that hangar for us, aviation was down in our community, in our region. We had recently acquired the hangar back from Mylan Pharmaceuticals at the point and we didn't have any users for it and John turned it around, did a great job for us. So after ten years, we decided as the airport will take the hangar back over and John will be the middleman to help us and we have a new tenant that will be starting operation. It's a new company that's being formed by two prominent businessmen from town and they're starting an aircraft charter, aircraft maintenance, and aircraft photography company. And they're also doing aircraft management services for other folks that have primarily jet aircraft that need pilots to fly them around. So, brand-new corporation and we're looking forward to helping them get their business growing here in Morgantown. The lease value is approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, so it's a good opportunity for us, for our budget, and it's another opportunity for helping the airport grow. Do you have any questions?
I have a motion.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe your first.
First. Sorry, you said first.
I'll second.
I thought he said first.
What's airport photography?
They're, they do aerial photography, so have an aircraft that takes photographic images of the earth. They do a lot of business for different states, including West Virginia, and they do other construction projects, they do photography of those as well.
So we had a first, did we have a second?
Yeah.
I can have a second if you need to.
Another question?
Keep us moving forward.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Koekke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes, passes six zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and annailing a twelve-foot-wide unnamed alley running a distance of approximately one hundred and sixty feet located between Callan Avenue and Madigan Avenue in the first ward of the city of Morgantown, Mon County, West Virginia, not used nor useful for sidewalks, storm water management, utility, or any other purposes. Ms. Masarri, would you like to?
Yeah, I was going to say, I will turn this over to City Attorney Simon Tin, who's been working on this with the property.
Thank you, Mayor Manager. This is an annulment ordinance as described at your committee of the whole meeting. It really acts to confirm a prior annulment ordinance adopted by City Council and just define the contours of that ordinance due to some inconsistent language used in the title and the body of that ordinance. It is on a property that's a former church site purchased by a new church organization with intent to construct a building for their services there. And so they're looking to make sure there are, there are no issues with their title or with the boundaries of their property so they can proceed with that. Recommend that council approve the ordinance and move it to second reading.
Move to approve.
So I'll second.
Discussion? Okay.
Bill Koekke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes, passes six zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance vacating, abandoning, and annailing a twelve-foot-wide unnamed alley running a distance of approximately one hundred and sixty feet located between Callan Avenue and Madigan Avenue in the first ward of the city of Morgantown, Mon County, West Virginia, not used nor useful for sidewalks, storm water management, utility, or any other purposes. Ms. Masarri, would you like to?
Yeah, I was going to say, I will turn this over to City Attorney Simon Tin, who's been working on this with the property.
Thank you, Mayor Manager. This is an annulment ordinance as described at your committee of the whole meeting. It really acts to confirm a prior annulment ordinance adopted by City Council and just define the contours of that ordinance due to some inconsistent language used in the title and the body of that ordinance. It is on a property that's a former church site purchased by a new church organization with intent to construct a building for their services there. And so they're looking to make sure there are, there are no issues with their title or with the boundaries of their property so they can proceed with that. Recommend that council approve the ordinance and move it to second reading.
Move to approve.
So I'll second.
Discussion? Okay.
Bill Koekke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes, passes six zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Morgantown authorizing acquisition of Chief View Public Service District by the Morgantown Utility Board and amending Article nine twenty-seven of the city code to establish rates for service area of the former Chief View Public Service District.
Be another one that I turn over to our illustrious attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Manager. The substance of this ordinance was presented in part by Utility Board Manager Mike McNulty at the City Council's May Committee of the Whole Meeting. The Utility Board petitioned the Public Service Commission for approval to merge with Chief View Public Service District. Based on changes in state law in twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, the rate-setting authority for large municipal utilities like ours is the City Council. So any rates applied to those customers have to be established by an ordinance of City Council. That's described in the Findings and Purposes section of this ordinance. The rates themselves were proposed by Utility Board staff in a draft ordinance that they submitted. They are consistent with a tariff formally approved for the Chief View Public Service District by the Public Service Commission of West Virginia. And City Council has an obligation to set those rates equitably under the governing law and that, as I understand it, is the basis for the Utility Board's rate proposal that the Public Service Commission found these rates to be appropriate for the customers of that district. Those rates are set forth in a new schedule to this water rate ordinance at Article nine twenty-seven. It is both underlined and highlighted for reference. It's a fairly long schedule with the, or article of the ordinance with the various rates set out. Minor stylistic changes are made to the rest of that Article nine twenty-seven to coordinate those provisions. As proposed, the fee would go into effect upon adoption of the ordinance. There is a provision in the ordinance for the city clerk to publish notice of, as a Class One dash zero legal advertisement consistent with the requirements for adoption of the ordinance.
You have a motion?
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Just for public clarity, no one's raising the rate.
This ordinance will not affect the rates of any of the existing customers of the system and, as I understand it, the rates of the customers of the Chief View system will stay consistent with how they were approved in the Public Service Commission tariff. That tariff did include periodic rate raises, so some of these rates were set to go into effect with an increase yesterday, July one of twenty twenty-four, and there are some rates increasing July one of twenty twenty-five as well in the proposed ordinance, but only for the Chief View PSD customers.
And they genu, they do that so that other rate payers aren't paying to bring the system up to whatever the standards are? Is that generally why they're raising rates for those particular customers?
Um.
Or some other difference in their system versus the system as a whole?
Those rates are set for the Public Service District when they were set by the commission to ensure the utility had enough funds on hand to operate the utility and earn a reasonable rate of return. That's their, their kind of general standard. They are, I think, when the Utility Board staff come and describe ordinances like this to City Council in situations where there's a merger, I think the last one was maybe River Road in twenty nineteen, they often say, we are, we are suggesting you maintain this other utility at its current rates until they would, until they'd be lower than the regular system rates and we would have everybody at parity.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Bill Koekke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes, passes six zero. That concludes our new business. Moving on, City Managers Report, Assistant City Managers. Please move it over.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of things to provide updates on. You heard briefly from our Airport Director about continuing to grow and move our airport forward. We have been working with a kind of a federal lobbyist, federal support to help gain more support for the airport at the federal level, primarily for funding and helping with our runway extension project. We also are getting ready to kick off an efficiency study and organizational state analysis for the airport that's specifically looking at staffing allocations both as it exists now and being able to move forward with where we're going in the future. Switching gears over to our Fire Department, we had a status check-in with our architects for the relocation of Station One and so we are closing in on completing the feasibility and site selection phase of that project with the initial preliminary cost estimates and then we are going to be moving forward with the design and construction document phase. So we have submitted some additional requests for congressional funding to help support the construction of that new station to help support our Fire Department. But we are kind of ending one phase and starting another one, so that was exciting to get to that point. We, I believe this has been reported in a few different places, but from Development Services and Code Enforcement, our bid call for the demolition of up to fifty-eight properties along the Richwood area and the Richwood redevelopment area is out and due in, I believe, maybe next month. So that's exciting to finally get that project to visible movement. There's been lots of things happening and moving, but nothing necessarily visible to the public yet, so that'll really have a visual impact and help us get one step closer to that redevelopment. We talked a lot about housing and emergency shelter. I did have the opportunity to chat, I was walking between our city administrative offices and stopped and saw one of our main point of contact from the West Virginia Coalition End Homelessness here and so it was great to see them here and not only that, they had about four or five additional staff members with them and were able to introduce myself to each of the staff members and talking about the additional support right now that they are sending to Mon County. As Counselor Butcher mentioned, we are part of the balance of state, we don't have our own continuum of care, so we rely on the Coalition End Homelessness, which covers, I believe, forty-four counties out of the fifty-five. So they cover a lot of counties and so sometimes it doesn't always feel like we're getting as much attention as maybe we feel like we need or should be getting, but it was a positive thing to see that they are sending additional resources here. You will, if you drive basically anywhere, you'll notice there's construction happening pretty much everywhere, around town, inside city limits, outside city limits. And I believe this might have been the mayor from Wheeling, but he says, you know, you've got to see orange before you can see green. So we are, summer in Morgantown is always a heavy construction season and there's quite a bit happening right now and that's just the few. There are at least, I believe, four other roadway projects, some city, some state, that are also going to be getting ready to move forward. So lots of construction, but it's great to see the investment into our infrastructure. Lastly, our offices obviously will be closed for the fourth on Thursday, but not to fret if you want to see some of our lovely city staff and elected officials, rain or shine, fireworks are going off on Thursday, July fourth, on the Fourth of July.
Yes.
And so the explosions will be happening regardless of the weather, so get your ponchos and your rain gear and come out for a great time. That concludes my report.
All right. All right, City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to say thank you to council for their diligence in appointing to our boards and commissions. I know you do work hard in making sure that we have members there that need to be there. And then I also want to share that we do have many vacancies, so folks can get to our website at MorgantownWAB.gov. There is a heading that says Boards and Commissions and you can just click on that and a dropdown will show you all of the boards and commissions that we have. Click on the links, you'll see maybe some membership and what their purpose is for the city. So we just encourage folks, if you would like to get involved in the city, we encourage folks to apply to those vacancies. So, and to the volunteers, we do ask a lot of our volunteers and we're grateful, they do come out and meet continuously, so. And then a little bit of echo of what Chief Powell said earlier, we do commend our police force and we are still accepting applications. Our next test is going to be October, that date has not yet been set, but it will be set soon by our commission, so take a look at the Morgantown Police Department website and there's a quick link to apply. And then, lastly, congratulations, Mayor Abu Ghannam and Deputy Mayor Jay Saleen. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Report from our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Working on some real estate issues, working with the Building Commission to get easements for Mon Power to install new facilities to serve the forthcoming Marilla Aquatic Center construction. I think they'll be meeting in mid-July and hopefully able to consider that. Also working with our grant writer, who we got to hear from tonight on identifying the parcels for a land and water conservation fund grant application for Whitmore Park. I think that's about all I have to report for tonight.
All right. From council. Who would like to start?
Council.
They always start on that side.
On this side?
Are we eating anymore?
Council, what's your?
Much to report. I sent over a resolution so that we can, that the City Attorney help provide to direct the Planning Commission to work on inclusionary zoning. Like to see that on a forthcoming agenda. That is the end of my report.
They do come out and meet continuously, so. And then, a little bit of echo of what Chief Powell said earlier, we do commend our police force, and we are still accepting applications. Our next test is going to be October. That date has not yet been set, but it will be set soon by our commission, so take a look at the Morgantown Police Department website, and there's a quick link to apply. And then, lastly, congratulations, Mayor Abu Ghannam and Deputy Mayor Jane Saleen. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Report from ours, to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Working on some real estate issues, working with the Building Commission to get easements for Mon Power to install new facilities to serve the forthcoming Marilla Aquatic Center construction. I think they'll be meeting in mid-July and hopefully able to consider that. Also working with our grant writer, who we got to hear from tonight, on identifying the parcels for a land and water conservation fund grant application for Whitmore Park. That's about all I have to report for tonight.
All right. From Council.
They always start on that side.
Are we eating anymore?
Much to report. I sent over a resolution so that we can, that the City Attorney helped provide to direct the Planning Commission to work on inclusionary zoning. Like to see that on a forthcoming agenda. That is the end of my report.
Counselor Corwin?
A couple of things of note since our last regular meeting. I've done multiple cleanups along the Deckers Creek Trail, removing literal tons of trash. It would be great if I saw anyone else at any of these cleanups, that would be really fun. I attended the entirety of the Downtown Drug and Safety Summit, despite that meaning that I missed part of the Great Race event, but, you know, priorities. I also attended the NLC's Opioid Settlement Fund webinar on behalf of the city of Morgantown. I don't believe anyone else signed up for that. So, yeah, a couple of those things that I continue to work on in addition to working with H3 and Catholic charities to try to figure out our shelter situation. Just a couple of upcoming events. July 4th, thanks for pointing out how crappy the weather is going to be. I hadn't looked until you started saying that. July 5th, also doesn't look like great weather, but we're having another cleanup, 9:00 AM, July 5th, near the dog park. If anyone wants to come, that would be great. We also have First Friday for the Arts, July 5th in the evening downtown. And July 13th will be the Arts Walk, and I'll keep the rest of my thoughts for tonight to myself.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Before this meeting, pretty much everyone here attended at the library something sponsored by the Community Coalition for Social Justice, and Lee Pholks, who's a local artist and community organizer, I would say, and they were celebrating 60 years anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and they created, they interviewed people, they, Lee Pholks and her associates, which are many and various, do interactive art, art that includes lots of interviews and then some product. So I borrowed this, there are not very many copies of it, I'm gonna return it, but it's like a graphic novel, and it's, there are a number of them, and like this is page 95, and obviously this is not 95 pages, so it's one piece of it, and so they interviewed all different community members related to the subject of civil rights, and it's fun because Charlene Marshall is in this particular chapter, and I think it's fun, all the different things that she's done in her life, and one of the most fun to me is, I think if she ever writes a book, it should be about going bowling, because part of what she's done to get to know people is bowl in the bowling leagues. But anyway, it has her first jobs in working at Sterling Fawcett, and of course, she's been a mayor here and been in our state legislature, so mayor, me, has the graphic novel. So anyway, it's totally lovely and includes a lot of different people from around here, both young and old, and their experiences. So, anyway, that's over at the library right now, and I'm not sure where, I know it's going to be a traveling exhibit, so it will travel around the state as well. I appreciate our democratic process. I appreciate that tonight we had an election, and we had a result, and we move forward on that basis. Congratulate our new mayor and look forward to working with him. I know that people have different kinds of issues particularly related to housing, and look forward to figuring out how we can piece them together so that we have a whole, so whether we have, when we have staff, when we have funds, when we have short-term and long-term goals toward getting more housing available for more people in Morgantown. I've talked to a lot of families that are living in other communities nearby, and I don't just mean right nearby, I mean, some families, for instance, live in Fairmont, that would prefer to live here if there was housing available. So I think we need to look at this issue, look at how we can repair houses that need repairing, how we can build new, and how we can make use of things like accessory dwelling units in areas where we have enough parking so that people can find their way to a place to live that they can afford in Morgantown. So, I'm working with all the different nonprofits that work on that, and also the people who develop here. So, anyway, look forward to that.
Thank you. Move on.
Counselor. I actually wrote down something, some things I'd like to just talk about. I've had some concerns about our public health and safety issues that have manifested in our city over the past years. Although this is a difficult and extremely complex issue that we need to discuss, it is important to me that the residents and business owners who contact me feel that the city is hearing them. Currently, we have a city code Section 941-05 that states in Section C, camping, "No person shall establish or maintain any camp or other temporary lodging or sleeping place within the park without the written consent of the city manager." I believe this ban only deals with a very small portion of our city, and we need to consider addressing and expanding it to include areas such as residential properties, city streets, alleyways, and the sidewalks. I would ask during a future committee of the whole meeting that this issue be posted and discussed. This, I believe, has become an immediate and serious safety and health issue that we can no longer wish the issue to go away. I consider our city to be a very kind and compassionate, who welcomes everybody, but at this time, the appearances of this community's kindness has been taken advantage of. We need to send a message that this city will no longer tolerate nefarious behaviors. By amending 941-05, I believe we have an opportunity to help save some lives by getting people off the streets and offer the help and services that are needed, including housing, rehab, and possibly relocating people with their loved ones. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor Kueke?
Interesting evening. I think we saw at the library numbers of people who have made considerable contributions to our community, and it's nice to see them highlighted in the activities that are ongoing there. You can see those on the posters, and they will be more permanently displayed in the booklet that Eve is putting together, I think. Also, too, some encouraging things. The Greenmont Party, it was this past weekend, was a very big success, despite the fact it was threatened by rain, I think. Wheezy, I'd like to congratulate you on trying to put back together the neighborhood.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was fun.
Good.
And enjoying it.
Good. Those are the things that build the community, and those are the things that make Morgantown worthwhile. Those are the things that we really need to highlight and concentrate on. We get lost in our problems sometimes, and they do seem overwhelming, but there are people out there working on these things, there are people trying to do the best for the community, people who take pride in their community. The South Park Association of Neighbors is currently looking at their past history. They're working with a PhD student from WVU in history to put together a survey. Little things that are just, give you some sort of feeling, some sort of pride that gets you by all the darkness that surrounds you, and those are worthwhile. That ends my diatribe.
Thank you. I know that I did miss the drug and safety discussion during the Great Race. I'm happy to say that I was able to sit down with Aaron as well as Mr. Justice today in a private meeting to discuss everything that I missed, as well as discuss opportunities that we have working collectively. I appreciate everybody who came today to talk about the Great Race. I really also want to express my great appreciation for you, trust me, to help lead and guide these meetings. I promise I will do my best to make everybody proud. Also, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Maria Smith. I know that she presented last week to our committee of the whole, we've been having ongoing discussions on how we can help with our Morgantown, with the Mon Gaelya Morgantown Transit, and I appreciate that. And also, I have been getting up early due to summer snowflakes or avalanches now, which would have been really great, providing camp for the kids. And lastly, thank you to Damian as well as Ms. Megan Dealey, who will be helping install our neighborhood sign, hopefully, next week. So, that also concludes my report.
So...
We're gonna do pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A-4 (B) (12) to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
A second.
All right. Move to executive session.